Thank you for joining us this evening for September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four, Bonner Sorrento Regular City Council Meeting. Before the meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few house rules to assist council members, staff, and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. For tonight's meeting, Zoom is being used to allow public participation with this regular city council meeting. For those using Zoom to participate, there are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear a council member speaking. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the mayor and able to speak to the council. Only attendees using Zoom application can use the raise hand option to comment. Participants calling in from a telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide feedback or public comment. Lastly, when we are not all in the same room, all votes in the meeting must be taken by roll call.
It is seven oh two P M on September seventeen, two thousand and twenty-four, and I will call the meeting to order.
Let's lead this to the flag of the United States of America. And as you know, we're all for which it stands, one nation of your God, under this wall, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's move to the roll call, and please, everybody make sure your microphone is on.
Councilmember Turner, here. Councilmember Maggie.
President.
Councilmember Alahi.
Present.
Vice Mayor Craig.
Here.
And Mayor Will Shengler.
Present.
Thank you.
The next item is orders of the day, the mayor or the majority of the council by vote may change the order at this least. If anybody wants, do you want to change the order?
Nope.
Do we have any additions to the agenda? Announcements. This is the time for council members to make announcements on subjects on the agenda. Nothing?
What? What happened? Sorry. And I'm going to say I didn't hear you.
Announcements.
Oh, announcement, okay.
Announcements. Oral communications. Is there anybody here present in chambers who wants to address the council on the topic that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, is there anybody online who wishes to address the council? Please raise your virtual hand.
No hands are raised.
No hands are raised. Moving on to written communications, did we receive anything? Nothing this time? Moving off of the consent calendar. Now, they usually vote about all of these at once. Is there? Is there anybody who wishes to pull any items from the consent calendar? Councilmember Turner.
Yes, the warrant list, please, number two. I've got a question.
Yeah. Anything else, councilmembers? We're pulling number two. So we're moving ahead with items. One and three. Right? There are anybody who wishes to comment on items one and three of the consent calendar?
No hands are raised.
I, oh, sorry. I think it's item one. Is that the one that has the appointment of the council election in the fourteen?
That was last, I don't think. Or not, that was in August.
Yeah, but that's, that's.
For the meeting then?
That was in the minutes of the meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify in that one that the appointment would be effective on the day. Normally, the people are elected on Saturday, November fifth, or?
Up to November fifth, whenever the election results get certified.
Right, so that appointment would be effective on that day.
Correct.
If you can make that change on the minutes.
Okay.
It basically says that, you know, who was there. Like, it was canceled, they were appointed, but it doesn't say effectively, affected as to what date, so I just wanted to make clearance to what date it is.
And that would be the election, would it come November fifth? Well, okay, we'll edit that language.
Okay.
Okay, without addition, are we? Is anybody saying you want to go line who wishes to comment on items one and three on the consent calendar? Please raise your hand.
No hands are raised.
I move to. Oh, go, you go ahead. I said I move to approve items one and three on the consent calendar. I will second that motion.
Second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Item pass five zero zero. I'm moving on to item number two, the warrant list. Is there anybody in chambers here wishes to comment on item number two? On the consent calendar? No? Is there anybody online? Please raise your virtual hand if you want to comment on item number two.
No hands are raised.
No hands are raised. So, councilmember Turner, you had a question about item number two?
Yes. I have a question on. The community center structural plan. I see that we're still spending thousands of dollars each month. We spent some last month. It was, I think it was eighteen thousand. Dollars last month. Why are we continuing to spend large sums of money on this project? When we don't even have an approved concept to discuss or review? Do you want to answer that?
Somebody here? I can take a stab at it. So the agreement. I'm sorry, at a previous council meeting, when the previous bid for the community center project with the addition was, no bids were awarded, they were rejected. The council decided, directed staff to scale down the project. And return with a smaller concept, which is what the bill last month was for the architect and mechanical with electrical plumbing contractors, I'm sorry, designers invoices, and the bill on the warrant list tonight is for the revised structural plans for that project. And then we will be giving an update on the status of the community center bids later on in the agenda. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments on item number two? You know, is there a motion to move forward?
I move to approve item two.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Does anybody want to abstain? Abstain, okay. So we have four yeses, zero no's, and one abstain. Public chairs, we don't have any today. Unfinished business. Item number four on the agenda is capital improvement project updates. You'll have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, councilmembers, and be safe for showing up. Couple items we just wanted to bring forward to council tonight to let you know where we're at in the process. The first one would be our annual payment improvement project. As you may recall, the two streets that were approved by our Streets Committee and Council here is Twin Creeks Road as well as West Ellwood Avenue. Another little item that I've added on so that we can get a cost on that to bring back to you would be potential sidewalk improvements along today's avenue corridor along the S curve. So the intent here is to bring our two streets back, get them bid, bring those numbers back to you to see if that number is adequate for you to approve, and then we'll have an add-on. If there's extra money in our annual budget that you've allocated to the budget process, then you can look at maybe even providing some sidewalk along that S curve that we've spoke about in the past. If not, we'll delay that to a later day where we can find funding for that, and the council's ready to do that. Currently, the streets are being finalized with, the design's being finalized through survey. We should have that finished up within the next two to three weeks, I'm told. After we bring in the surveys, we will finish the engineering design of what type of surface treatments we'll do on those streets, put those plans together, and send them out for a formal bid. After the formal bid, we'll bring those back to council, provide you the numbers and the estimates and the potential low bidders that have come forward, and you can decide what do you want to move forward on that capital project here. I'm projecting it will probably get our bids back this winter, which is actually good timing. That's when the crews are not working in the fields, they're not super busy, and they're all trying to get next year's projects lined up for them. For the following year, we usually get the better bids in winter when they're not working. When they are working and everybody's busy, typically the prices go up, so. That's the potential forecast, and we'll bring those in. The other main item which a councilperson brought up tonight is our community center. After, this is our third iteration, as you may know, recall with the final design for the face of the building remodel. Little background, the staff met with the architect and community center commission in May. And per their direction, the architect was directed to return with a simple design of the existing facility and keep the projected costs below a million dollars if possible. The first plan is simplified floor plan, including leveling the floor out like the original design did, or the previous design did. And provides a large room, a large meeting room and bathroom and kitchenette. The second alternative, which is added to the report tonight, you'll see, is basically leaving the separated floor elevations the same and creating a large meeting space, a pop where it is now with a bathroom, facility, and kitchen as well. You'll see those layouts again as attached. Staff was expected to receive plans last Friday or Monday, they did come in last night, Monday, so we have those plans now in-house. They're being routed through building as we speak. And we should have any comments back from them in the next day or two. It would most likely be miners since we just demigrated the previous projects to within the existing room that exists there now, so we don't, we don't believe there's going to be much changes if any from our building plan check. Once those plans and specifications are approved, we intend to send that out for formal bidding as quickly as possible, which again takes a minimum two weeks by state law. Once we get those back and deem which ones the most responsible, responsive bidders, we will bring those back to you and show you the costs of both option one, option two, and at that point, council can determine whether they move forward on the project or not. Any questions that councilmen have tonight? Listen in.
Yes, I have a question on the design of both of them.
Yes.
Option A and option B.
Okay.
One of the rooms is labeled cert. There's only an exterior door. I don't know what it's going to be used for, right? We have an N I C P here.
That is correct.
For the exterior, for the tools, and so cert does not mean a room that has only one evidence. We're not going to use that as some E O C, an emergency operations center. I talked to the chief at the picnic, and I said, are, do you have any plans of using this as our community centers and E O C? And she says that's would be enough.
Okay.
So I think we need to look at that option there. It's both in option A and B. And it would be better used for something else.
We can definitely take your direction on that once the plans come back and you decide if you want to move forward with it. Yes?
I have a second question, if you don't mind.
Glad to.
Staff has said in the past that you hope to get bids of about a million dollars per bid. The city has received about two hundred thousand dollars in grants for this project. And I believe that we have already spent more than half of that in repeated design work. Is that true?
About a hundred thousand, you're correct. About a hundred thousand in design work, yes, you're correct, in demolition.
Okay, so throughout this project, we have counted and getting five hundred thousand from Silicon Valley Clean Energy. But that grant comes with certain provisions, right, constraints of cash. So. Here's my question. Do we still expect to get that grant? Do these designs include upgrades that are required by S V C E because we don't know what they are? And what is the approximate cost of those upgrades?
First question is, we do expect to be able to use the grant, the five hundred thousand dollar grant?
Okay.
Tomorrow, I have a scheduled call with, hopefully, our new city manager to, with S V C E to coordinate that. So we'll be asking those questions to make sure everything that we've employed in these designs, with it being resilient as far as having the solar panels and the battery backups, no gas, that we still comply with that grant, so we, today, I do believe we still meet those requirements. We're looking for that tomorrow. We'll bring that back to you.
So I'd appreciate it if, when you come back, you give us the cost of that. So we're not taking it, we're not taking the grant money and including some other costs in there to come up with what S V C wants. Right? And I, to be, to be frank here, I'm concerned about the draw that we have on city reserves to build this community center. I, I don't want that to happen. We used to have two years of reserves, and we're down to one, and now we're almost. I don't know what it is. And I, I'm assuming that our city manager is looking into that, how much we're really drawing into our reserves.
Absolutely, and that's why we're coming up with two much reduced options for you as far as cost should be, something to make that fiscal determination for us.
And let me just make this statement. I have gotten calls from the residents about their concerns. And some of them have said, oh, if we're down to zero, we have no reserves, so maybe it's best for us to just join forces with Los Gatos. As a city. Of course, we don't want that to happen.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question.
Okay, so questions, and then I'll ask for public input. I have one question about the first design. There's a, you talk to bottom, there's a blue line across the meeting room. Is that a wall, a removable wall, or?
It's a race header. It's open, that's all open on top of the meeting room, completely open.
Okay, so that's part of the roof structure?
For some reason, they're just showing the race header that goes across that room in this one view, so.
I think it's, if I could explain. That's the beam that goes across, it's a vaulted ceiling.
Yeah.
So he's showing that that beam would be there.
Because there is a wall right there at this moment.
There'd be, right, the beam going.
Yes, that's correct.
Any further questions? Okay, in that case, let's open it up for public comment. Is there anybody in the audience here? No, no comment? Is there anybody online who wishes to comment on this item? In that case, we'll bring it back to council for further comments.
There is no action required on this, is that correct?
Yeah.
So I'll just make a comment that having written the grant application for the original, the second version of the community center, I can't see how you could meet any of the requirements for the Silicon Valley Clean Energy has for this. In terms of relative to the first one, the, the first center design. But it would be a function of what the features are in here, but I can't see it showcasing any of the the elements. So that's just a comment. I, you could say that, well, I don't think we'll get the five hundred thousand dollars, but we would get the eighteen thousand dollars that they've already given us.
Well, let's see if this authority can clarify that.
Thank you for those comments, I will stick to them then.
Yeah.
Without the five hundred thousand, it would be very difficult.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I believe this building is about a thousand square feet, or a little bit more. So our construction cost then is about twelve hundred dollars per square foot. Is that correct?
I don't think that's right.
Is that right?
Thousand square feet by a million? That's what you're saying?
I think it was nine forty-eight or something like that.
So it's about twelve hundred per square foot. And I think that's pretty excessive, so. Given that we have the land, we have the building already there. I want us to look at what makes this building so expensive.
We hope to get you those numbers, so you guys have.
You know, even at the picnic, a lot of the residents came up to me, and they were concerned about the amount of money that they're going to put into this, considering that the state keeps asking us for money from, from the residents. So just be sensitive about that.
Absolutely.
I'll comment then. I've had a number of residents say to me that they would really like to have a community center where they could get together and they could, they could feel part of a community, and I think that in fact, one of the applicants for the youth commission talked about that, if you recall. And she said that, you know, we really don't have a sense of community here. Having said that, I don't think that this design works for what we've got there, but those are just comments.
Exactly. I mean, if you're looking forward to design, it's not going to get us to five hundred thousand. That's a different cat.
Yeah.
So why are we doing that? The whole idea was to get, why not sure? I mean, yeah, but at least there should be an alternate that allows us to get that five hundred thousand. Then we can figure out whether you're going to spend another five hundred on top of there. But if you don't get the five hundred, then it's killing the project, because then it's going to be eight hundred thousand, which you get, which will be done, not going to be spent. So is there a reason why we don't have the things in there that would get us the five hundred?
We, we will ask them that tomorrow, for what we have to do, make sure we qualify for that, or we don't. We have the five hundred thousand dollars and a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, and we have about six hundred and seventy thousand dollars on the tables for us grants.
Yeah, the, the real project is being designed right now. Shouldn't this have been asked before we get this thing designed? That's going to go to bids.
We've never, we have not been told that it's qualified yet. Councilman, we'll find that out tomorrow.
So, I mean.
We just got the plans in last night.
I'm just saying, the plans are the planned it. Also, when Metro Check says it's not going to work. I don't know, maybe Metro Check needs to give some input back to the architect or the plan to at least present a plan that has the options available. Then we also can decide whether you're going to spend the money or not.
Understood.
But we can't go in where money's not coming in anywhere because the plan is useless.
Good point.
So if you spend a lot of time getting here, I don't know, maybe we need some, need more communication between boss member and Metro Check and your team, and the architects team to see where are we missing.
We kind of have those two cornerstones, right? We have, how do we meet the requirements for the five thousand, five hundred thousand dollar grant, and how do we set it under a million dollars? Where is that middle brand?
Well, yeah, but at least it should be, one of the plans should be there that the five hundred thousand is available. I mean, if you don't have any of them, then you're not doing that, you're spending, you don't want to spend any money.
Understood.
And that's when I say, let's convert this into a dog pattern.
Right? Oh, oh, actually, or, let's first.
So, yes, just kind of building off of councilmember Alahi's comments. I think it would be worthwhile for us to just get a quote for how much it would take to just put the drywall and the floor back in it. Just have an empty room. So we've never discussed that option. We don't have anything to compare the cost of that, so it would be, I think, a valuable number to have. Just, let's just put the thing back together. Assuming that we don't get any grants and, and we don't want to spend the, the cost of the design that it is right now, but it's got to be, we, we, we should do something with the room, and even if we have to start with just a blank building and build it up as, as funds become available, we should know what the costs are for that option.
Perhaps we'll prep it in our staff report as an option when you make your decision with the numbers that come in. Yeah, if you have to apply to that, I think it'd be great.
Yes, so you, you leave more than the drywall, right?
I know, whatever it takes to make it structurally sound.
You leave, you leave the toilet and you leave.
Yeah, so.
Correct, it's a little bit electricity and nuclear conditioning and something else. Well, maybe, maybe on the agenda for one of the future meetings after we receive the bids back and after we get an answer from Silicon Valley, Clean Energy about the grant, so.
So I do think that option B, which is the last page of the staff report, is pretty much that option. It's hard to tell in this drawing, but it would be maintaining the current separated floor levels, which is why the entrance to the meeting space, I guess, is the back or the front of the building, depending on, on your perspective, but it's off of Saratoga, Los Gatos. And then the lower floor level would still be accessed.
Okay. That, that, that's what it looked like.
Yeah.
That's what it, it does have a key, like what it was.
Yeah.
It does have the renewable energy component in it for the, for the bid, but we can pull that out, so you can see we'll pull out the energy efficient portions, and there's just your plan going. Yeah.
So, so are you asking for your, for, for a bathroom that you can have as well? Or are you talking about just putting stuff?
Well, I think, I think it is viable to have a bathroom.
And a kitchenette?
I don't think we need the kitchenette.
Okay, so, so.
I just want to have a bare bones building that we can say, here's the price for that. Here's the price for getting all of the cool stuff that Silicon Valley wants to give us a grant, Silicon Valley Clean Energy wants to give us a grant for. And this would be a really nice building that I think the community would be proud to have.
Perhaps I can propose in that those will all be alternate bids and that base model, just a base building. If you want kitchenettes, it's this much. If you want the renewable energies, this much. Choose, I think that's a great idea, okay?
Any comments? Yeah, that's, that's why I took it prepared for mine. So you have a base building, which works basically, so it's a turnkey operation, you can go in and start using it. And then you also have a plan, we try to put in everything that Silicon Valley will do in the five hundred thousand for. So we can consider all the functions, so that we know how much more it costs to get a proper community center compared to a bare bones one. Okay, so we can do, do have bells and whistles on, and who won without the bells and whistles?
I'll make a final comment from me. Silicon Valley Clean Energy had come out with, with three point two million dollars worth of grants or whatever, and we got five hundred thousand of that allocated to us. Since then, in the, in this current year, calendar year, they've come out with additional grants that are for programs, so for, for covering operating expenses. And you know, there's, they want to promote going away from natural gas and all-electric buildings, and they are really looking for, to be able to show people how these things work. Which was the idea behind the five hundred thousand dollar grant that they gave us, because they gave us, that was the maximum you could get. And so we didn't move forward with that. But if we would have moved forward with that, we would then be eligible to get programming funds, where they want to have things happen, and they are willing to, to give you funding for that, and the expanded grants are both for the municipalities, but also for not-for-profits and being schools and other things. So I just wanted to say that there were other funding opportunities that are, that have come up now, but we're not eligible for it, so.
Can I make? I, I, I am concerned that our cash reserves are dwindling. Okay, and for example, we had to borrow money to pay CalFirst bill, which will cost the city an additional, we have a thousand. And we will have to do that again next year, for, for the year after, right? And so I believe that we're headed into recession, and we've already seen forty thousand technical layoffs. And in my opinion, we should be conserving money and rebuilding our reserves. So that's my position. Thank you for listening.
All right, have you heard a comment? I, I really would like to get that clarified on the financial side. I mean, I know our results are getting down, but it isn't like you're borrowing money to pay anybody. That was not my impression. Instead of, I mean, you could do things that you need, you don't have as many, much as you expected for that. So, and I think that's, that's a discussion for the whole financial paper to look at it. And really, in my mind, whether you have any city in the back where you have a community center where it's being used for the benefit of the community, that's, that's what we're here for, is to provide services for the community. We can address all that, but I think we need a better financial picture, because you can actually understand, and we're ready to cut. Because you can actually understand and we're ready to cut. But see, this thing with five hundred thousand dollars is not a good option either. So if you give me five hundred thousand, you say, oh wait, we don't want it. You can really think about it. Okay.
Okay, so it looks where we'll go from here is, uh. We'll get bids at some point over the next couple of weeks, month maybe. And then we'll bring it back to council and decide on further actions, see if there's option three, which is a. Even further scales on, you drive all the line, something like that.
And I, I, if I, I request council to be involved in five hundred thousand, sure, make sure. And whatever you're presenting, so you can allow the color back, essentially. You know, they said that it's.
Oh, wait, we'll, we'll hear that there after tomorrow.
Thank you.
All right, since there is no action required on this, uh. By the, we will move on to the next main law agenda. Which is item number five, consider, uh, staff recommends that the city council considers one additional application for the youth commission. And there is a staff report on this.
That's for me. It's short and sweet. Um, we continue to receive, they trickled in, um, like you saw last meeting, so. Um, additional applications. We actually did receive one recently from Jeremiah's, uh, Stouch. He's actually a former, um. Youth commissioner. So I think we just slipped on the date, but he submitted his application and would like to be considered. Um, to be appointed for this year's, um, youth commission. Um, yeah, and we still have spots available. As of now, we have seven that you guys have acquainted, so we, we still have room. Um, to add if, if that's what you wish to do.
Okay. So our staff's recommendation is that we appoints?
Yeah.
Yes. Councilman, with any questions on that? No?
I'm sorry, sorry. How many youth commissioners do we have now?
Seven acquainted.
Seven, uh, and we have fifteen slots?
It's a fifteen slot, yes. Yeah.
Yeah. So we should absolutely appoints. I think, um, any other questions about this? Tell the comment, is there anybody here in chambers who wishes to comment on this appointment? Is there anybody online who wishes to comment on this item? No? In that case, bring back to council and further comments.
No further comments, but I'll make a motion to, uh, appoint, uh. Jeremiah's Stouch, uh, to the youth commission.
Oh, it's like.
Does she have a comment or?
I, I, I had a comment. I'm just saying, I think we increased it to fifteen one year because a lot of people wanted to join those pre-forwarded. But the interest is gone. Maybe you should reuse that to ten or something, but people really feel like it's something you can get.
So that's actually a conversation, um, Vice Mayor and I were having in terms of. Um, then we're going to probably talk a little bit more about it, just so that we're able to actually also make our quorum. Um, and a lot of the students do let me know that, you know, when they have tests or. Extracurricular activities that have such as sports, they're attending and they're either finishing right at that time and aren't able to come or. So there's always a little bit of a complex, so, um, we'll probably be wanting to bring that back at a different time, but yes, we definitely want to bring that up.
Thank you.
So we had a second question for Turner. That was the second, right? Okay, yeah.
Do we have to do a roll call? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That was your numbers.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business. Um, item number six on the agenda is consideration to approve and authorize the city manager to execute a contract with. Metropolitan Planning Group for staff support for the general support of the, not to exceed. One hundred and seventy seven thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. May we have the staff report, please?
Yes, thank you. Um, California law requires that each city have a general plan, which serves as the blueprint for meeting the community's long-term vision for the future. Um, the State Office of Planning and Research recommends that general plans be comprehensively updated every ten to fifteen years. To reflect changes in the community values, economic conditions, and emerging issues and challenges. The current Monteserina general plan was adopted in two thousand eight. Um, except for the housing element, which was adopted separately in May twenty twenty four. Um, one of the programs that is required by the housing element is to update the remainder of the general plan also. Um, additionally, this project is one of the council's strategic goals for, um, this current year. The agreement before you tonight is with the Metropolitan Planning Group, uh, to update the current general plan. The M group was the city's consultant for the completion and certification of the recently adopted housing element. Um, because of these recent services they provided, M group has an extensive understanding of the city's character, environment, goals, and policies. Which does make them uniquely qualified to assist with the general plan update. The overall project will take just about two years, and the cost will not exceed one hundred and seventy seven thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. Um, the city has budgeted eighty seven thousand, five hundred dollars. In each, um, of the first fiscal year, as well as that same amount for next fiscal year, to cover the cost of this project. We do have Asher Cohen on Zoom tonight, and he would be the project manager from M group. So if there's any questions from him, uh, he's available also. And that concludes the staff report. Um, you can answer any question if you have to.
Go ahead.
Um, I believe that we used two different advisors on our, um. On our housing element. What were those two firms?
So the first, um, firm that helped us through, sort of the first third or so was E O C. Planning Group, and then M group stepped in to. Finish it up.
Okay, I'm glad it wasn't the other way around. Um, so. I haven't gone through the fair proposal, but. Who are the other, and maybe this is a question for them, who are their references where they've done this work? On a, for a similar sized city as small as we are.
And yes, I think that probably would be best answered by Asher. Thank you.
Sure. Good evening, Diana. Good evening, members of the council. Um, so the most recent one I can speak to is we worked with the city of Sausalito. Um, and finished their general plan update in, I believe, twenty twenty one. Um, and then we've also worked with the city of Belvedere up there before that. So those are two recent. Communities that are around the same size, Bay Area that we've done work on.
What's the, the population of Sausalito?
I'd have to look it up, uh, as we speak. It's going to be a little bit larger than Monte Serena. I want to say sixteen thousand.
Um, the population of Sausalito is about seven thousand.
Seven.
Seven, okay. I, I didn't know that they were that small. Wow. Um, well.
Maybe that's two years, yes.
Oh. I, that, that is, that's my question, sorry.
All right. Any other questions?
I have two sets of questions. Um, one is about the process, okay? Could you talk more about how this work will be divided between city staff and the M group? Um, who will provide the intellectual content for this? Will staff give the M group direction? And go about putting this in the proper format with boilerplate? Or will the M group create the content and staff their views in a person? Can you tell me which, which process you're going to use?
I would say probably somewhere in the middle. Um, M group will definitely provide the majority of the staffing resources for the overall project. Um, as part of the scope of work, there is community meetings. There's a lot of the input on, on the updated general plan will be as a result of input from the community. Um, but M group will be. Leading the outreach meetings, um, drafting the document for. Staff's review, and then of course the final document will be brought to, well. Draft documents and ultimately the final document will be brought to both the Site and Architectural Commission for Recommendation and the City Council for Part.
Okay, I think, I think we should also give input to the M group. As well, instead of just getting buried, but, and then we, we review and say, yes, 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 no. Um, I have another set of questions, and I, and this one has to do with the objective standards. I noticed that creating the objective standards for the revised plan is not included in this process. And I think the objective standards are important because this is. The only mechanism we have to exercise some control over what's built in the city. How are you planning to handle that? Um, will stack create the objective standards? Or will we get another proposal to contract that to the M group? Could you be the process, please?
So we do have, um, objective design standards that were approved by the city council. In, I want to say early twenty twenty two. Um, so the optional task that was included in this proposal from M group. Was to further revise those and fine tune those based on, um, the application that has happened over the past. Two and a half years or so, since, since the original design standards were updated, or I'm sorry, implemented. At this point, we haven't used the objective design standards because we have not received a lot of applications for ministerial reviews. The majority, all of the planning applications that we received are. Under the discretionary review process, which had gone to the Site and Architectural Commission. So at this point, we don't really. Have fine tuning to the objective design standards that are needed. Though that optional task was not, um, included in this proposal. If we do find that fascinating in the future, that would certainly be something that would be brought back to council.
Which makes me to a third question. And the third question has, is this, do we have a discretion to postpone this? For one or two years, considering that we don't have the objective stand, we have an objective standards that's not being used. Uh, and this way, we determine first. How our budget is looking, and then we, we spend a hundred and sixty thousand every distance. A hundred eighty thousand.
So our general plan is already on the longer side of, um, the state. Standards for general plans. Um, and we do have a program in the housing element to complete the general plan and update this. As I called massive in twenty twenty six. So in order to stay in compliance with both of those elements.
And it'll take them two years to do this?
Yes.
Any further questions?
I, uh, do you mind just kind of giving us a bird's eye view as to exactly what you will be doing? You know, as far as the whole community of the plan, what, what does that require? What are the different steps that are going to be taking place? And it doesn't have to be in nitty gritty detail, but at least I believe I'm kind of very clear. And whether, at one point, would council be able to attend some of those meetings? Uh, that, that you think are going to happen.
You mind responding to that, Asher?
Not at all. Uh, absolutely. So, what? Um, yeah, please stop me if I go into too much detail, but. There are, uh, several elements which are basically chapters of the general plan that will be, um, looking at updating land use. Um, circulation, which is transportation, roads. Um, housing, we worked with you all as Dana mentioned, to get that updated earlier this year. Then, um, pardon me, there is conservation open space. Which, um, deals with the natural environment around the city. Uh, noise as well as safety, safety being, um, safety or from natural hazards, fire, earthquakes. Um, is really the focus of that, but it also does get into community safety. As well as there's a, um, new requirement to look at and analyze environmental justice within the city. Um, and then Monte Serena also has an additional optional element, like in public services and facilities. So we'll be looking at the existing general plan and looking at ways to update it and keeping compliance with state law. And there will be, um. Trying to think of how to describe. We'll have check-ins with city council to talk about what. Um, these updates might entail, what state law now requires, that did not require in two thousand eight, um. And we're going to have our progress posted on the city web, on a project website as we go forward. So there will be opportunities for check-ins. I'm looking at the, um. Staff report attachment. I know we have budget and a schedule. The schedule is on PDF page twenty five. So you can see where, um, we talk about adoption hearings, public review drafts, and, um. Those sorts of items throughout that schedule.
That's really helpful. Appreciate that. Uh, are you, when you look at what grants, maybe you want to pay for some of this? From the, either the city manager, maybe you want to look at that, or. It seems to be a ton of grants running around someplace, but they may have been on the platform, but you guys might know. Uh. What grants are given to cities to do in the general plan or in the planning or how's the general analysis?
Yes, we have, um, been looking, um, for grants. I, I have not found anything to date. We will continue that. Um. That research, a lot of the grants, um, coming out of the state right now for community development are for affordable housing projects.
The quality of the zoning plan is going to be to try to make affordable housing.
We covered that in our housing element, so we will just update the rest of the general plan. To, to meet what was already been adopted in the housing element.
Yeah. Excellent, thank you.
Vice Mayor, just go ahead.
Thank you. Did I hear that a website was going to be built that will contain our, our plan that the public will be able to view?
So yes, as part of the proposal from M group, um, they will develop and maintain a website, um, for our community. To provide input and obviously see the status and of the project as well as, um, documents that have been produced to date.
Okay, great. Is there an example of one of these websites that we could look at now?
Um, I can offer one. It'll be a slightly larger town, um, but Petaluma, yeah, we've been working on a website. With them, it's planpetaluma.org. Um, I've. That's the first general plan I know I'm just working on that I can think of that's, um, still active. Uh, it is worth knowing that it's a larger city. They had a, a much, you know, uh, different process than we're envisioning here, but I think that does give a good example.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have a question also. Um, it looks like we're looking at a. Twenty twenty six, age for this to be finalized. What is the limiting factor? Why can this not be done in a year or six months? What's, what's limiting our speed, so to speak?
So I do think it is, um, quite a bit of work, um. Is one reason for the timeline. The other reason is to spread out the costs over the two fiscal years. Which is what's been adopted in the budget.
Resource limited. Good, thank you.
Um. Did you, uh? Uh, solicit proposals from other firms, or is this the only one?
Um, this is the only one we solicited. Um, we did do some research on costs for. Um, other cities' general plan updates, and, um, they work considerably more, um, than most other cities. Um, because M group is familiar with the community and our policies from. Um, been working on a recently adopted housing element. They have a little, a parlor needs of scale of savings where there's not as much background research that they'll have to do to get up to speed, so. That's why, um. We, we went with, we just received the proposal from.
Great. Um, after you take a public comment, then I'll make some comments.
Okay.
Just, so, is there a further question? I, I refer to send these out to the council? Is this?
No, professional services, we aren't required to.
That's good. You, you, M group did a good job on the housing. You should do that, so thank you for that. And you, you gave us a list of things you're going to do, as I, as you went through. Of course, I've given up the size of our city. You may want to take a look and see which ones of these are. Would it be just formalities? You can, you know, crop it up very quickly, or whether you need to do deep, deeper dives in some of those things. Because we, we, we don't have any, uh. Transportation, you know, it's, that's all, you have to look at independence. So you may want to take a look at it and see if you can, as you can tell, our city council is concerned about the budget and the results and all of that, so. Whatever you can do to help us out with that, that would be worth it. worth it. Thank you.
Right. Unless there are any further questions, I will open it up for public comments at this point. Anybody here in chambers who wishes to comment on this item? Is there anybody online?
No hands are raised.
No hands are raised? In that case, we'll open up for council comments.
Um, I've gone through the work plan and uh, thank you for asking the question on why over two years, but but I understand. Um, I think it's important to leverage the good work that was done for our housing element. I'm pleased to see the proposal in here. And uh, I, I think I'm gonna be able to support this uh, based on on the prior work that was done. So I I support staff's recommendation.
Any other comments?
Yeah, and 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 I I commend the, M group for doing the work on those gathering. I wanted to commend our planning. Okay. But I see you planted also for getting that done, so they're in the software. Actually.
Great. In that case, uh, I'll be looking to our motion. So move, move that second.
And I will second that motion.
Do you want to call vote on this one? No? All in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Another vote. I didn't see your vote, council member term.
No, I'm not, I'm gonna vote for it.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
Motion carries.
Motion.
Five zero zero.
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you. Looking forward to being in touch.
Alright, thank you.
Looking forward to uh, regular updates. Alright, in that case, we'll move on to committee commissioner reports, and I will start with Vice Mayor Craig.
Thank you very much. We were unable to have a youth commission meeting because we did not have a quorum, but we did discuss just some off agenda topics with them to try to get a little bit of a head start going. And uh, we'll be meeting in October next.
Can I ask a question about that? Yes, why do we have the quorum rule for youth commission?
Because they are subject to the Brown Act. Because they are appointed by the council.
Great. I guess. Alright, thank you.
Makes them feel important.
Yeah, that was it.
That's it.
Councilor red line.
Uh, six comments. Uh, so I attended the city association meeting, uh, there was no legislation session meeting. Um, we, we appointed our chief executive, Shali, who's done a good job over the last year. And so she's been reappointed for another year. And she's an independent contractor, so we don't have to pay her any bills. And her salary is not going to change, the budget test stands or whatever you're paying. It's the same. I don't know if you paid their math bill or not, but you might take a look at that. We also had a presentation from uh, James Williams, who's the chief executor and county executive. And the county has a twelve billion dollar budget, about twenty three thousand employees. And his, his presentation was basically on uh, emergency services to the hospitals and clinics, and apparently there there seems to be a seem to be a hole on that. They don't have enough paramedics and the when they get people to the hospital, the emergency rooms are, you know, over stacked and takes forever to unload the emergency vehicles and they don't think they have enough, so they're looking at that. The uh, the second, the other presentation we had was from uh, a health issue on, especially on suicides in the, in this area, or overall, and this is one million. Uh, spoke to one million, one million, three hundred thousand suicide attempts every year. Or a hundred and twenty seven every day, these are just horrible stats. On whatever level it's ever managed is, uh, the number of suicides, everything attempted in this country. Uh, so they adopted a resolution, planning a recognition of this, like, suicide prevention. I think you may want to consider it and that also, we moved that along.
Well, that's, that was basically my book. See, council member term.
Nothing to do with that one.
Also, I really went to.
Uh, thank you. We had a Silicon Valley Clean Energy Board meeting uh, last week. And um, as I mentioned earlier, there's gonna be, they've got more grants that are available. Um, they're looking at their, we're gonna be looking at their rate structure and and uh, we pass the budget for uh, next year. Their year end is September thirtieth. Um, uh, and there's gonna be uh, a ribbon cutting uh, in October. Um, and Silicon Valley Clean Energy is doing extremely well. Uh, with respect to West Valley Clean Water, uh, they did, we did agree to change the name. Um, but it's a uh, gonna be a very minor change. Um, West Valley Solid Waste, this uh, all the changes have gone through with the rates, and I'm not sure if you've heard about that from any constituents to my other uh, council members. Um, but I've had a few people make comments to me. Um, and uh, that it's, we were also commended uh, on our s- our waste that we generate, and it was one of the lowest ones in the, in uh, the four cities, so that was good on that. I I will have more details at the next meeting on that. Um, and then with respect to the BTA Policy Advisory Committee, uh, we did have a meeting uh, last week. And uh, I truly think we're leaving money on the table with respective grants. There are opportunities there for more money and um, I think that uh, uh, as we move forward, we really need to spend some time and energy on uh, pursuing grants. Um, also, uh, in terms of the ad hoc committees that I'm on and uh, Mayor Wolf, you and I are on the Financial Systems Ad hoc Committee, and I suppose we should state that we did meet. Um, and uh, there's some issues there, but uh, we're going along in parallel and uh, in terms of the charter that was approved by council in, I can't even remember when, was it in August or I think of
It's something to say.
Um, that uh, there are some opportunities there and uh, I I'm doing some work on that. And then the ad hoc um, police, uh, we have not met on that, but as I mentioned, uh, town council has uh, hired a new town manager. And that person has run a, an in-house uh, police department before, so um, I had some conversations with the, with council, town council members and uh, they say it's very timely that our agreement is coming up and they've got a new manager coming in. Um, but I think that is all I have to report.
Thank you. Uh, now we have a few short remarks, uh, no meetings, but Silicon Valley Animal Control will be next week, Wednesday. Also, the West Valley Mayors and Energy will be next Wednesday, and our interim city manager, I will attend that meeting in Cupertino. It's fine. That's all I have to say at this point. And now it's time for council member comments, you know, anything you want to talk.
Anything? No comments?
Um, first of all, I wanted to uh, say that I have very strong faith in our new, our acting city manager, Diana. I think she's gonna do an excellent job. Um, I also want to make sure that there's nothing in that NICP shed but tools. Last week, we had a three point five earthquake in El Rock, three point five in Santa Cruz, who had all these fires, and we have an empty shed. So let's, let's start to do that. One of the things, one of the reasons I brought up the CERT being connected to, to the building is that the CERT team will have to put radio antennas and a solar panel separate from this building. So we need, we need a separate shed for that. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I, I forgot a council member report in a way. Uh, one of the other items that discussed at the city association meeting was a sea level rise, but there is a whole team now that's being put together to uh, monitor sea level rise and look at and doing backups, so whatever you need to do to protect it, so the area is moving forward and they're, they're about a budget. To uh, there's the coast commission that they're on the center who's lined it, it takes care of it. Then the rest of the city that also touched the bay, you know, and some of the places, they're also spending money on that. Uh, I guess money is not gonna be worried about it right now. It will take a, bring up that issue, but it's good to know that, you know. I thought they were gonna move to one strange, so it's good to know that's right now.
It's good. House prices are going up then.
Definitely, they're gonna, they're gonna, you don't have a choice.
Or any other council member comments? Well, we're moving on to city managers' reports.
So just um, a couple of comments. Um, this Saturday, September twenty first, it's Coastal Cleanup Day. Um, from nine AM to noon, there um, is some coastal cleanup activities that the Creek Connections Action Group is sponsoring and organizing. If anybody's interested in joining that, uh, their website is www.cleantree.org. And um, secondly, the Fall Twenty Twenty Four Monastery Newsletter is being prepared. Um, we are planning to deliver it to residents in late October. If there's um, any articles or information that the council members would like to be included, please let me know. And that is all I have.
Alright, thank you. Uh, do we have any future agenda items? Is there anything you would like to add to future discussions? In that case, we will move on to a closed session.
Okay. I don't know. I also dismissed.
Topic is possibly appointment government section code five four nine five seven B one, title city manager.
I'm late.
Before we move, if there I should ask, is anybody in the audience who wants to address the council on this topic? Uh, if anybody online who wishes to address the council, please raise your virtual hand.
No hands are raised.
No hands are raised. In that case, we will move on to our closed session.
So take the first.
Too many, absolutely.
Thank you, mother, damn it, Coke.
Correct?
Correct. We, council came back from our close session with regards to public employee appointed government code section five four nine five seven B one and there is nothing to report. And with that, I will adjourn the session of the Moskva City Council at eight forty P M.